Good morning, ladies and evening. I don't know, different groups listen and individuals listen to this at different times. So whatever time of day it is, welcome back to the continuing story that John has given us through the angel, through Jesus from God. And so we are in the 21st chapter. It's what we've been waiting for. We're going to get a glimpse at the bride and the city, the holy city today. And we've been in the lake of fire a lot lately. So this is a new place and we're going to enjoy it. But there are going to be resonations of that lake of fire even here. So we will advance and we're going to talk about a wedding, but it's not going to happen yet. The betrothal, we're going to see, but not the wedding. Let me pray and then we'll launch. Dear Lord, let sunshine enter our heart today as I record this. It's raining. Tornadoes have ripped across the south and come near even relatives of mine. And we pray for those people who've been affected by these storms. We know from Revelation, we live in the not yet or the already and the not yet. It's not yet come to pass what you're going to tell us about in today's chapter. And so we reside here in this time. We pray that we would be faithful and true as you are. We would be faithful and true to you. And so bring us your word, lighten our path and give us your light. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen. So we are going to see the bride or get glimpses of her. And we're going to see the holy city descend today. And I just want to mention this. I was invited to a virtual wedding on Saturday. So I livestreamed a wedding. I've livestreamed several during this time. And because I've mentored so many young women who are in that age group, I've attended a lot of weddings and I've got two already booked for the summer. But this one was virtual because of COVID, of course, and it took place in Memphis. And I thought that that's what we're seeing. We're about to see this virtual wedding take place. It's not going to quite happen this time. We're still waiting, but it's like we're seeing something, but we're not in the room and we're seeing it through John's eyes. In your questions for this week in preparation, I used a quote that I found in some study questions about J. R. R. Tolkien and how he paraphrases Revelation 2:14, 21:4. I don't know. You can see, I'm not dyslexic, but that sort of seems like it. Revelation 21:4, "As the day in which everything sad will come untrue." And I didn't want to put this in your questions because I wanted to give you a little context for it. But in 1996, Toni Braxton recorded a hit that was called Unbreak My Heart. At the time, Unbreak My Heart said something different to me than just mend my heart. It was like, can we go back before it ever happened and recapture something that is more beautiful? And I want to read you some of the words of this song. There was an editor to my literature book in high school. Fry, I think was his name. And he always said, "All of literature is salvific in nature." I think that. So every song you hear, I mean, basically where does it come from? We're all living within God's reality here. And so it's got to come from something. It has intimations of the story that God tells us, but it may be the brokenness of that. So let me read some of these words. And this is about a love relationship on earth. And you understand, we're speaking of a love relationship made in heaven in today's, but you've got to transpose a little bit. "Don't leave me in all this pain. Don't leave me out in the rain. Come back and bring back my smile. Come and take these tears away. I need your arms to hold me now. The nights are so unkind. Bring back those nights when I held you beside me. Unbreak my heart. Say you'll love me again. Undo this hurt you caused when you walked out the door and walked out of my life. Uncry these tears. I cried so many nights. Unbreak my heart, my heart. Take back that sad word goodbye. Bring back the joy to my life. Don't leave me here with these tears. Come and kiss this pain away. I can't forget the day you left. Time is so unkind and life is so cruel without you here beside me. Unbreak my heart. Say you'll love me again. Undo this hurt you caused when you walked out the door and walked out of my life." That is sad, but it sort of expresses the cry we all feel. And it's not like God walked out of the door, out of our lives. I mean, He did exile Adam and Eve, but it's speaking of the deep, deep brokenness of this world and those things that cause relationships to break apart, relationships with God and relationships with each other. You ought to stream it. She's sort of sultry, so that may bother you, but the words nevertheless speak to our condition in this world. And what we find in chapter 21 of Revelation is that's exactly what He's doing, is unbreaking our hearts. As Tolkien says, "It's the day in which everything sad will come untrue." I love that un-word. So let's dive in. "Then I saw a new heaven and a new earth, for the first heaven and the first earth had passed away and there was no longer any sea. I saw the holy city, the new Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven from God, prepared as a bride, beautifully dressed for her husband. And I heard a loud voice from the throne saying, 'Now the dwelling of God is with men and he will live with them. They will be his people and God himself will be with them and be their God. He will wipe every tear from their eyes. There will be no more death or mourning or crying or pain, for the old order of things has passed away.'" Hallelujah. Glory be to God that He gives us these words that in John's vision, they're becoming a reality. But we still are in the already, but not yet. And so we wait for these things. But He's given us sort of like a virtual wedding, if you will. We're seeing it. We're not experiencing it in person yet. So let's look at this. I will read further, but let's digest this part. I want to speak about this word new, and I emphasized it in your questions. So if you looked at those words, Canos and Naos, in what is the Matrix? The character is called Neo. It's new. It's like that. So Canos, I said, was not, it's Canos that is used in this passage that John writes the expression new nine times in Revelation. This is from Dr. Kistemacher's commentary. John writes the expression new nine times in the Revelation. Four of them appear in this chapter that we're in today. This adjective conveys the meaning of something that is new, but has its origin in the old. And take these for example. "The new covenant came forth out of the old." So it was not different. It was a progression of the old into the new. "The new command came from the old one." Now this new command, let me take a side road and invite you to Holy Week. But Maundy Thursday, that word Maundy comes from the word mandate and it comes from that passage in which Christ says, "A new command I give unto you. Love one another." It's not a new command. It comes from the old, but it takes on new meaning because of the crucifixion, the death, the burial, the descent into hell, the resurrection and the ascension and the seeding of Christ on the throne where He is praying for us right now. So it takes on a new meaning, but it comes from something that God has said for a long time, "Love your neighbor as yourself." The new Jerusalem has its source in the old. We're going to see this when we start talking about the holy city that descends. The new man is a transformation of the old man. And the new heaven and the new earth are based on the old. So this new heaven and the new earth are not like God in Hebrews when it says that He made everything that was out of nothing, ex nihilo. So God created out of nothing, but this is not out of nothing. It's out of what He created the first time. John uses the first, this first term, Canos in Revelation, but never does he use Naos. So just know that this new heavens, new earth, the new Jerusalem is based on the old Jerusalem. So it has new meaning, but it's based on the meaning of what the old Jerusalem stood for. We'll see that too. Then the new heavens and the new earth, we see in Isaiah. See, "I will create new heavens and a new earth." Isaiah 65. "The former things will not be remembered, nor will they come to mind, but be glad and rejoice forever in what I will create. I will create Jerusalem to be a delight and its people a joy. I will rejoice over Jerusalem and take delight in my people. The sound of weeping and of crying will be heard in it no more." You know, He's speaking of the new heavens and new earth back in the Old Testament in Isaiah. "Never again will there be in it an infant who lives but a few days. Death is going to be banished, or an old man who does not live out his years, the one who dies at a hundred and will be thought a mere child. The one who fails to reach a hundred will be considered accursed. They will build houses and dwell in them. They will plant vineyards and eat their fruit. No longer will they build houses and others live in them, or plant and others eat, for as the days of a tree so will be the days of my people. My chosen ones will long enjoy the work of their hands. They will not labor in vain, nor will they bear children doomed to misfortune." This is of course symbolic, "for they will be a people blessed by the Lord and they and their descendants with them. Before they call, I will answer; while they are speaking, I will hear. The wolf and the lamb will feed together, and the lion will eat straw like the ox, and dust will be the serpent's food. They will neither harm nor destroy on all my holy mountains, says the Lord." We're going to be on that holy mountain again in this passage. Then from, if, where is this from? 1 Corinthians 15. This is about the body that is based, our resurrection body is based on this body. But someone will ask, "How are the dead raised? With what kind of body will they come? How foolish! What you sow does not come to life unless it dies. When you sow, you do not plant the body that will be, but just a seed, perhaps of weed or of something else. But God gives it a body as He has determined. And to each kind of seed, He gives its own body." Then He goes on to say, "So it will be in the resurrection of the dead. The body that is sown perishable, we die, will be raised imperishable. It is sown in dishonor, because we are sinners. It is raised in glory, because we are glorified. It is sown in weakness. It is raised in power. It is sown in natural body. It is raised a spiritual body." So all of that to say, the newness spoken about here is something that we've not yet experienced like we are going to experience it. I declare to you, this is again from 1 Corinthians 15. "Brothers and sisters, that flesh and blood cannot inherit the kingdom of God, nor does the perishable inherit the imperishable." Listen, I tell you a mystery. "We will not all sleep, but we will all be changed in a flash, in the twinkling of an eye, at the last trumpet, for the trumpet will sound; the dead will be raised imperishable, and we will be changed." So here is what we live for. Here is what we die for. These words that are faithful and true. How are we to understand the loss of the sea? That has been a mystery. I've got more questions about this as I've taught Revelation than almost anything else because all of us love the beach, it seems. And the thought of not being at the beach or not seeing the sea or its beauty is unimaginable. So this could mean that in the newness of Canos, that based on the sea that we have today, maybe it's reformulated somehow in the new heavens and the new earth, if this is to be taken literally. But there is much, many scholars look at this symbolically. And symbolically, we've seen that the sea in the past has represented other, has represented evil and chaos. And so you see that during the time of Noah, it was a flood that destroyed the earth because there was no one who was righteous, no, not one. That overwhelming waters in the Psalms and in Jonah picture the coming of death as Jonah was swallowed and saved. "From the sea rise terrible monsters." We saw that in the book of Daniel. We see it in Revelation itself. We see it in Isaiah and the Psalms speak of that even. The removal of the sea means permanent removal of all challenges to God's order. And so the beast of the sea came up out of the sea, remember? And when God sends demons or the, into the abyss, that that is in the water. It's to be assumed it's way down deep in the water. So this loss of the sea is not, it's a good loss for us, not a negative loss for us. And so we will have to wait to see exactly what it means, whether it's literal or symbolic. But even if it is literal, it is symbolic in this way of meaning. God is ridding us of something that is evil and chaotic. The city descends. So let's, let's look ahead. Verse five of chapter 21. "He who was seated on the throne," we've seen John use this before to avoid in the Hebrew mind, the use of the word God. "He who was seated on the throne said, 'I am making everything new,'" new again in the sense of Canos, not Naos. Then he said, "Write this down." But these words are trustworthy and true. So again, John is asked to take a pen and writing implement and write these words out, just like God, just like Jesus is called trustworthy and true, faithful and true. These are trustworthy and true words. "He said to me, 'It is done.'" Think about this. This word, Gaganon in Greek, it doesn't come from the verb to be, which you would think if it said, "It is done." It comes from the word become. And so it's also used in chapter 17. Let me see if I can find this to compare with you. It's where the bride is compared with Babylon. In Revelation 17, I'm sorry, I am, I've got the wrong thing on my mind here. But it is used when the, I believe it's not Satan, but it's the beast and the Antichrist and the false prophet are thrown into the lake of fire. "It is done." Of course, we know Christ used, "It is finished." It's not the same Greek word though, on the cross. But there's been a completion to something that God had promised, whether it's on the cross or whether it's in this instance. But I'll come back to the comparison between the bride and Babylon and thereby Jerusalem and Babylon and the prostitute and the bride. "He said to me, 'It is done. I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end.'" Think about this. He was the creator, Alpha, the beginning. In the beginning, God created. He is the consumator, the end. And here we are seeing the consummation. And so those things He's created, He's now showing the purpose for which they were created and fulfilling the words that He has promised. "It is done. To him who is thirsty, I will give to drink without cost from the spring of the water of life." That's an iteration of Isaiah where without money they can come and drink. And so this idea of this drinking of the water, the spirit, eternal life, we bring to mind the Samaritan woman when Jesus said, "I will give you water to drink and you'll never thirst again. He who overcomes will inherit all this, and I will be his God and he will be my son." And so there we have, "He who overcomes." In each of those seven letters, remember, beginning of the book of Revelation, there was "he who overcomes" and a promise was given. In each case, there was a different promise given to that particular city. But here He's pulling them all together. "He who overcomes will inherit all of this, all those things," He said in those letters, "and even more. And so they will be co-heirs with Christ, the only reason we are inheritors. It's not on our own. It's because we're adopted because of Christ's work on the cross. Otherwise, this would not be true of us. We would just be creatures. We would be human beings who are created by God. But now we are redeemed, human beings who are created and redeemed by God." He's going to compare this. So "he who overcomes," that means "he who stands firm." And notice the first one He calls out being the opposite, "but the cowardly, the unbelieving, the vile, the murderers, the sexually immoral, those who practice magic arts, the idolaters and all liars. Their place will be in the fiery lake of burning sulfur." This is the second death. And so notice the contrast between those who inherit all of this and those who don't have that inheritance, but they are cast into the fiery lake of burning sulfur just like Babylon was, just like Antichrist, just like the false prophet, just like Satan. And so there, they will spend the rest of eternity with what they wanted because they refused to repent. Now there's still time for repentance. And so John is warning those. And He is saying, "Okay, you who overcome are not like the cowardly. You stood up in the face even of death, in the face of persecution. You have allowed God's spirit to inhabit you and to remain faithful, even to a bitter end in some cases." This is the second death. "Fear, don't fear him who can kill the body," Jesus says, "but fear him who can kill the body and the soul." And that is the second death. Then verse nine. "One of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls full of the seven last plagues, came and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the bride, the wife of the lamb.'" Now this is where we want to go back to chapter 17 and compare notes because this reads almost like chapter 17 where you see the prostitute and her demise. But in this chapter, you see the bride. And so again, we're dealing, as I have said before, my biblical theology professor who said, "Wherever you see judgment, you see grace." We're seeing these two together once again. "So one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls full of the seven last plagues, came to me and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the bride of the lamb.'" Let me read from chapter 17 just a minute and just listen to this. Close your eyes and listen. "One of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls, came and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the punishment of the great prostitute, who sits by many waters. With her the kings of earth committed adultery, and the habitants of the earth were intoxicated with the wine of her adulteries. Then the angel carried me away in the spirit into a wilderness.'" We're going to see a comparison when we go back to chapter 21. "There I saw a woman sitting on a scarlet beast that was covered with blasphemous names and had seven heads and ten horns. The woman was dressed in purple and scarlet and was glittering with gold, precious stones and pearls. She held a golden cup in her hand, filled with abominable things and the filth of her adulteries." Now compare that with what John is seeing here. "One of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls full of the seven last plagues, came to and said to me, 'Come, I will show you the bride, the wife of the lamb.' And he carried me away in the spirit, not into the wilderness, but to a mountain, great and high, and showed me the holy city, Jerusalem." Okay. Whoops. He changed metaphors for us. So we thought we were seeing this bride. Now we've heard it described other places, but here He's going to change the metaphor and we're going to see a city. Now what is this with the bride and the city? We'll talk about that in just a minute, but listen. "So he carried me away in the spirit to a mountain, great and high, and showed me the holy city, Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven from God. It shone with the glory of God, and its brilliance was like that of a very precious jewel, like jasper, clear as crystal. It had a great high wall with twelve gates and with twelve angels at the gates. On the gates were written the names of the twelve tribes of Israel. There were three gates on the east, three on the north, three on the south and three on the west. The wall of the city had twelve foundations, and on them were the names of the twelve apostles of the Lamb." Now we see this in Ezekiel. We've read some of these passages before the measuring. It's going to, measuring of the temple is going to come back up here. But so here, I want you to see, I dress today. I know it looks like I may be in mourning, but this scarf has all these colors on it. And I was trying to pick up the colors of all these jewels you're going to see. Now you saw that Babylon had jewels. I have gold earrings on today. I'm more of a silver person, but I do wear gold. And I wore it today because of the city of gold and the gold streets and the gold that was in the temple. The prostitute also had gold and pearls. And we're going to see pearls in the gates of the city. But it, it, remember, there is a pseudo-trinity and a pseudo-bride. And this is the pseudo-bride. But the real bride, there's nothing like her, beauty. And the beauty of the prostitute is ruined and corrupted by her behavior and her sin and her adulteries. But here, we see something different. And so the bride becomes the city. Let's talk about that. What does the bride symbolize? Well, the bride itself symbolizes the intimacy that you find with God and the dwelling place. We'll come back to this in the city. The dwelling place of God is with men. Jesus tabernacled among them. The word here, even with dwelling, is the tabernacle. And so we see the progression, just like we said, the new heavens and the new earth don't come out of nothing. They come out of what was. And so here you see the tabernacle or the temple or Eden. Eden was the first dwelling place of God with, with men. But they were exiled. And then God allowed them a tabernacle, told them to build it. So he could dwell within it. But the dwelling there was this small cube, the Holy of Holies. The dwelling here, we're going to find out, is this huge gigantic cube of fourteen, fourteen hundred miles high and wide and deep. And so we're going to see that God has been building this picture forever and ever, from the first, when he created Eden, that he had a dwelling place with men. And it all went awry because of Adam and Eve's sin, which we inherited. And but he's unbreaking our hearts. He is making everything sad, untrue. And it's happening before our eyes as we, as we gaze upon this. So let's go back. But I'm wearing a scarf that mimics some of the colors of some of the jewels that we're hearing about. Verse 15, I'm going fast because there's so much cover. The angel who talked with me had a measuring rod of gold. Now others, others, an angel has measured the temple. John has been called to measure the temple. And so there's been a lot of measuring going on. Some of it in the Old Testament, that we've read passages from Daniel, Ezekiel. And then in the New Testament, John in chapter 11 was called to measure the temple and the people who were worshiping. And so here we see the angel is called to measure with a gold measuring stick or a gold reed and is what they would have measured with, because they're in the new heavens. The city, its gates and its wall is what he was to measure. The city was laid out like a square, as long as it was wide. He measured the city with a rod and found it to be twelve thousand stadia in length. Now that is what I was calling fourteen hundred miles. We would understand that better. And as wide and high as it is long. It was a cube. He measured its wall and was a hundred and forty-four cubics thick. Now why does this city have a wall? There's no reason for any defenses. And it's said to suggest the provision for the bride, the protection of the bride here, and the definition of an actual city, but not as a defense, because all of God's enemies are put down. There's no reason for a defense to be made. So here is a cube city. And what is said to be referenced here with all this symmetry and exactitude is the perfection of this city and the intimacy of the relationship with the bride. So we have too, the idea of one bride, but within that one bride, there are many. And so we see this intimacy to God in three persons, this intimacy that there is there, that love your God with all your heart, all your soul, everything that is within you, praise his holy name. And then love your neighbor as yourself. He said it to us so many times, that it's about love of God, but it's about this love of the community. And so we see that with the picture of the bride and then the picture of the city being synonymous. So one flows into the other. And now we're describing the city. Let's go back to verse 18, the wall. The wall was made of jasper and the city of pure gold, as pure as glass, was shining like glass. The, it's not as transparent as glass, but in the first century, glass wasn't transparent. The foundations of the city walls were decorated with every kind of precious stone. The first foundation was jasper, the second sapphire, the third chalcinony, the fourth emerald, the fifth sardonyx, the sixth carnelian, the seventh chrysolite, the eighth beryl, the ninth topaz, the tenth chrysoprase, the eleventh jacinth, and the twelfth amethyst. Now, there were twelve stones on the priest's breastplate, and each stone had a name of the tribe, one of the tribes of Israel. And so as the priest went into the cube, the Holy of Holies, one time a year to offer sacrifice for the sins of the people, he would carry with him the representation of the tribes with these stones. The stones named in Revelation are not the exact stones in the breastplate. And scholars, it baffles scholars, why it is so. So I can't explain that to you, because some of the scholars can't explain it to you. But there is every bit the idea that in the city now, it's the people are actually there under the tabernacle or under the wings of God, if you will. Under the tabernacle, there is no reason for a temple, we're going to find out, because these people are the temple. So in history, you saw that God was in the garden with man, and then the tabernacle came, and then the temple came, and then Jesus tabernacled with them. The tabernacle came to earth and dwelt with them. And then Jesus says, but you are the temple. Your body is the temple. And so here, all nature sings and around me rings, because the revelation of the sons of God that I read about last week from Romans eight, it's come to be, it's come to pass. They've been revealed, they're there. The priest doesn't have to bring them in on his breast, because they're all priests. We've all are priests of this God, and we're in the city with him. The twelve gates were twelve pearls. Each gate made of a single pearl. We think of the pearl of great price, that this is, how, how do you, what is that? I think it's a Capital One commercial, that it's priceless. This is priceless, we're talking about. What God has given us, who we are to God, is priceless. The great street of the city was of pure gold, like transparent glass. Again, it's hard for us to understand what exactly that's talking about. But sometimes, I think I've used this image before. When I look at the sun shining on the telephone wires, I see something like is described here. So verse 22. I did not see a temple in the city, because the Lord God Almighty and the Lamb are its temple. The city does not need the sun or the moon to shine on it, for the glory of God gives it light, and the Lamb is its lamp. The nations will walk by its light, and the kings of the earth will bring their splendor into it. On no day will its gates ever be shut, for there will be no night there. The glory and honor of the nations will be brought into it. Nothing impure will ever enter it. Do you see how there's this pure symbol? And then again, we see grace and judgment. You see, these other people are brought up again. Nothing impure will ever enter it, nor will anyone who does what is shameful or deceitful, but only those whose names are written in the Lamb's book of life. We've got to stop. John has opened the door, which is my symbol. But I'm going to go out with Isaiah. This is from Isaiah 60. Nothing in here is new. We've heard it before. Isaiah 60, arise, shine, for your light has come. And the glory of the Lord rises upon you. See darkness covers the earth, and thick darkness is over the people, but the Lord rises upon you, and his glory appears over you. Nations will come to your light and kings to the brightness of your dawn. Lift up your eyes, look about you. All assemble and come to you, your sons from afar, and your daughters are carried on the hip. Then you will look and be radiant. Your heart will thrive and swell with joy. The wealth on the seas will be brought to you. To the riches of the nations will come. And here we see it. No longer will violence be heard in your land, nor ruin or destruction within your borders. But you will call your walls salvation and your gates praise. The sun will no more be your light by day, nor will the brightness of the moon shine on you, for the Lord will be your everlasting light, and your God will be your glory. I'm, I'm going, go read Isaiah 60. I can't read the whole thing. But remember this, and I want you to remember this. This has not yet happened. Today is the day of salvation. There are those in our families who have not yet come. There are many in our city who have not yet come. We have the burden to tell them to not be cowardly, to stand up and deliver the word faithfully and true to them, so that they might know this God who has created them, that they might come and drink of this water that quenches totally their thirst and to this perfection of a city that God has prepared for us and has beautified us with his robes of righteousness to enter his presence with joy. So I leave you with this invitation to be invitational with your homes, with your words, with the actions that you, that you practice towards others. Be invitational, be the light on the hill, and don't cover it up. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you. We can't wait for this day. We're excited about it. And yet we live in COVID land. We live in the land of tornadoes. We live in the land of shootings at spas and at malls. And we live in the land of hatred to those who are not like us. Father, you have promised that one day these will all not be our reality. We will live in the new reality, and the old order will be passed. Father, give us patience, give us boldness, and let us remember how deeply loved we are as your bride. For it's in Christ's name we pray, amen. One more chapter.